Listen for calls, Chair of the Adult Social Care, Children's Services and Education Committee. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's meeting with councillors are required to attend in person following the expire of the Coronavirus Act Regulation which permitted online meetings. We're using the equipment to connect the chambers into the Microsoft Teams meeting and some of the officers involved this evening will be joining remotely via Teams. I need to inform everyone present that this meeting will be recorded and broadcast live on the internet through Teams and the recording of the meeting will then be uploaded and available for repeat viewing on the council's website. Thank you everybody for coming this evening. So we'll start with apologies. I think councillor Robson has sent his apologies and then online we have councillor Sultan. She's attending online there. So those are the only apologies. Any other apologies? No, no, thank you. Okay, so a declaration of interest for those that have read. Yes councillor Kim?
Yes, I'm declaring a pecuniary interest in agenda item number eight, the Vaccine Champions Programme as my employer are involved in the vaccine rollout and I have been assisting.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I've agreed I will remove myself from the room during that agenda item.
All right, thank you. Any other declaration of interest? Okay, thank you. We move on to petitions. There's none at the moment. And then we go to questions from the public. There's none at the moment, but there are two questions from the councillors that are there. So the questions are from, first question comes from councillor Cresswell to ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Children's services in neighbouring boroughs are reportedly experiencing financial difficulties. Can the lead councillor update us on the financial status of Reading Children's Services, Brighter Futures and any relevant implications for our services?
Thank you councillor Cresswell. I'll refer this question to councillor Hopps Hoskin. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair and thank you to councillor Cresswell for this very timely question actually in terms of the finance and public services at the moment. So Children's Services supplied by Brighter Futures for children within a pre-agreed contract sum. Just to give the equivalent of a budget, you know, that we do for our own departments. Most of our Children's Services relates to children looked after and social work is in an area under financial pressure due to our demographics, rising younger population, demand on services and difficulties in recruiting permanent social workers. In addition, high fuel costs and increased demand for home to school transport is also an area of ongoing pressure. The company's working tirelessly to manage these. What this means is that Reading Children's Services are insulated by the huge difficulties facing upper tier councils in England to fund services in the face of underfunding for 12 years of Conservative governments. This situation is becoming more urgent as a result of the inflationary and demographic pressures mentioned above. The local government association has calculated that the combined impact of rising inflation has landed councils with an extra £2.4 billion, there should be a missing billion there, in additional costs this year alone. That's on top of the budget gaps that existed, you know, prior to that, which was already a major concern. It's therefore extremely concerning to us to hear that Jeremy Hunt, the Chancellor of Exchequer, I think, I haven't checked my phone for the last couple of hours, floating the idea that further cuts public services across the board. The President of the Association of Directors of Children's Services has said that the idea of further efficiency savings can be made is both fanciful and deeply worrying. There are wholly inadequate levels of funding available for Children's Services in England and in Reading, but we will work tirelessly to deliver the best possible services with the funding we have and to work to deliver the best possible budget for the council in February. What is really required is the removal of this failing government, which feels like an understatement, through a general election right now.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Is there a supplemental question to this one?
I guess getting back to the implications for our services, whether you expect financial troubles in the rest of this financial year to have an unusual and significant impact?
Yeah, to answer, I think things are really tight. It's not just Children's Services across the council and things coming back via, you know, working through the on-year. I think we also have an extremely tough budget round, which I'm saying about setting the best possible budget, which will be looking at those pressures, I'm on here, how we deal with those, where we can look for more effective ways of working. But, you know, the reality is, is there is, you know, substantially less money available than we require. So, you know, things like youth services, you know, that have been decimated across the country and in Reading, which you dearly love to build up and re, it just isn't the funding available. So, you know, it's just really tough, I think it's fair to say. But hopefully we'll try to handle those pressures better than our neighbours. Although I hope they do well as well because obviously we're talking about children and families at stake. It's a very tough time for Children's Services in this country.
Thank you very much. So the second question also comes from councillor Cresswell to councillor Hoskins.
Thank you Chair. As councillors, we should do our best for our children in care and leaving care. It is good that the councillors guaranteed interviews, has a guaranteed interview scheme for care leavers. All party councillors think that in line with the care leavers' covenant, some council apprenticeships should be ring fenced for care leavers. Please can the lead councillor update me on work looking into this?
Councillor Hoskin?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, no, thanks councillor Cresswell for this question. We were just mentioning earlier, it's actually an area that the parenting panel were discussing just a week or so ago and it's something that we really are prioritising. So as a relatively new lead councillor, I am making our corporating parenting responsibility a key priority for me and as part of this, reviewing and enhancing what we do to support our looked after children and care leavers. Council apprenticeships and other roles in the family business should absolutely be a part of that review. Feedback from our looked after children and care leavers on a one-to-one basis and through our Care to Listen, our Children in Care Council consistently confirms how important it is for our young people that we support them to succeed in life, to help them develop their skills and to fulfil their potential. Apprenticeships are an important and positive route that we would like to see more of our care leavers accessing. As part of our work with Care to Listen over the next six months, we're going to review our approach to apprenticeships, including maximising the access of care leavers to council apprenticeship opportunities. This review will include consideration of all possible ways we can maximise our young people to successfully access apprenticeships, including through ring fencing.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Do you have a follow-up? Sorry?
Yeah, thanks councillor. Will the review be published to this committee?
I would imagine so. It's certainly something that I want to see come back to the, so, you know, there's a process of working with, as it says here, our careful kids and care leavers. So they're really involved in what, you know, so we can really respond to what they're looking for. But yeah, no, I really, I expect to come back to this committee. I certainly want it to come back publicly because I think hopefully it's good, it's going to be a really good piece of work and really expand in the kind of support that we're doing. Hopefully you'll be pleased.
Thank you, thank you for that. I've just been told, because in my papers it was written minutes to follow. So the point is that they've been published, the minutes that are there and there are minutes of other bodies also for health and wellbeing from eighteen March to twenty, twenty-two to fifteen July twenty twenty-two, which are in there. Is there anyone who wanted to highlight anything on the minutes that are there for different bodies in the last minutes? No, no, thank you. We move into the next agenda. Oh, okay. All right, the item number seven was the urgent care centre in Reading. So we're having some internet problems. We'll come back to that later on. So we are moving to item number eight, which is the Reading Community Vaccine Champion programmes on this one. Thank you Sean.
Thank you Chair. So this is about the Vaccine Champion Programme and the progress update. And you will see in the papers that Becky Pollard, who was our interim consultant of public health, has provided a very detailed report and put a lot of information in because obviously this is a really important topic in trying to target areas of our community where vaccine uptake, particularly around COVID-19, has been problematic. And the reason that we just wanted to provide members with the update is that we received £485,000 to run the Community Vaccine Champions Programme in order to improve the uptake of COVID-19 particularly, but we wanted to also ensure that that covered the flu vaccine programme also, so that we would capture people around where there were myths and difficulties in relation to their understanding of vaccination. And that was due to our particularly low uptake around that. So you will see that phase one of the programme finished in July twenty twenty-two and that we're now entering the next part of the phase, which is currently working with improving the vaccine uptake and ensuring that people take advantage of that in the next six months. And most of us at the moment are being invited for our vaccine. So it's a very topical issue to catch people at this point. The way that it's been done has been really around, you know, an excellent example of real frontline working and using and utilising the voluntary sector and people in the communities, the faith organisations, the voluntary sector, people in the communities and also professionals in order to try and pick up where there are areas from our data which illustrate that vaccine take-up is low. And so we've been working very hard with the voluntary sector in creating these vaccine champions. And we have thirty-two recruited and twenty-seven trained, as you will see from the report. And the intention is to continue to try and promote that because some of the issues around vaccine hesitancy is around not understanding some of the aspects of it despite the major campaigns, but also accessibility about where to go to get it or having family commitments which, you know, do not enable people to be able to access vaccines easily. So the Vaccine Champions have been working through that and there's a governance group which is illustrated on page, I think it's ninety-five. I'm just going to double check that I've got that correct. I think it is ninety-five, sorry Chair, yes it is, which shows the management of the money and the feedback loops in order to ensure that we are reading the data each month and picking up the areas where there are particular vaccine hesitancy. So, you know, the report is brought to members to show the good progress that's been made and the continued Vaccine Champion Programme being recognised and acknowledged in Reading and the work that's continuing to increase uptake of vaccine, both flu and COVID-19. The phase two of the delivery programme and how that's being rolled out and how the money is being spent that's being given to us by the levelling department of levelling up in housing and communities. And also the infrastructure and capacity and capabilities established to date, deployed in the planning and delivering of the programme. So that that's what we're recommending as action. I think that that's as much as I will say. Happy to take any questions Chair. Our consultant public health isn't here this evening, but if there are any technical questions that I can't answer, then I can find those out for you.
Okay, I'll pass this to councillor McQuint.
Thank you Chair. I just want to say I really welcome the report and I think we all recognise the work which has gone into the programme. And as highlighted, the programme has recruited over thirty community champions and obviously phase two aims to expand on that. And I think it's a really good opportunity for us all to sort of thank the volunteers who've really worked so hard and I'm sure it's been a valuable experience for them too, but the work they've done within the communities and working in the voluntary sector. I think it's so important to, you know, to publicly thank all the volunteers. And obviously as you've highlighted, the systems that have been set up because of the programme will help deliver further health programmes. I think it's very beneficial and it's a really good opportunity to thank the volunteers as well for all the work that they've put into that.
Thank you. Any of the councillors wanted to ask questions on this report? Councillor Colette?
Thank you. Oh yeah, I'd also like to second what councillor just said. Really good report. Just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight that could possibly help going forward. First of all, there was some narrative in there which I think should need consideration to be removed and that's where you've, you know, placed in your report the, some of the community being hard to reach. It's a narrative that we're seeing more and more and, you know, it could be considered that the community you're talking, who then go on to talk about is invisible. Hard to reach should be replaced with something more, I suppose, positive rather than how it's being put. In a way, it's how you're engaging with the community, not whether they're hard to reach or not, because it puts it in a place that they don't want to be reached. And maybe it's the way that we communicate or how we communicate. And secondly, I noticed as well with the groups that you're going to be targeting, that I noticed that you put in there, a couple of points actually, you put in there the black, stroke, black African community, Asian British, Asian and Pakistani community. And I just wanted to mention that as an ethnicity, my group is not mentioned and I'm black British. And the point I wanted to elaborate there was, you know, being Asian British is recognised, but being black British is not. And for something like that for me, it's been over forty years, I've been crossing forms out and putting black British because it's not in the forms. But also I wanted to note that the communities that you were trying to reach and some of the wards you were trying to reach, you've put down there battle ward, but I didn't notice Norcott Ward because they have a high community that are in the region you described or in the communities you described and maybe they should be added? That was it?
Thank you councillor. Sean?
Yes councillor, and your points I understand and we will attempt to ensure that we include those issues. Some of the terminology is nationally used, which I think is why people have reverted to it in some of the texts, but certainly understand your comments and received and I will pass that on to staff in terms of ensuring equality. So thank you for raising that with us. The question you raised about the battle ward and the other wards is that it's whether or not the data is telling us those particular things. So at that particular time, it was those particular areas that were showing the significant hesitancy. So I think that's why it's raised. So if other wards were showing that there was vaccine issues that we'd picked up through the volunteers in terms of that. So I think that's why it was isolated at that particular time because that was where the work was being undertaken, because that's what the data was showing us at that moment. Hopefully that helps answer the rationale.
Thank you Sean. Just to add also on those vaccine, it's more or less like what happens in Weekly where there's a part of Weekly, which is what they called it down under Weekly Wood, where the vaccines, actually people have never been to Weekly Wood's community centre. So it's one of those things to flag where people have never seen any of this vaccine reach out. Thank you. Councillor Hoskin?
Be very, very brief. I just, I just really just want to reiterate what I said previously, a really welcome. I think it's a really good project. I think the bit that I think should be a, we should take away and learn from a past way is just how closely, you know, there's been co-production all the way through in terms of working with communities, working, you know, because at the end of the day, I mean, Colette's absolutely right about the terminology of hard to reach is that we've not been very good at listening and hearing. And actually this project ironically has been very much about involving people that we're looking, that are parts of the communities that we're looking to increase vaccination rates. And I think it's really, you know, we can take learnings from this Richard and move on and the kind of stuff that we want to do elsewhere in the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the?
It's not a question. It's more of a, I noted in there that you were also trying to reach the young people, but what sort of communication forms are you doing to communicate with them? Because I know for a fact that a lot of them are on either Instagram or TikTok. And I know it's not a traditional form of connecting with them. Therefore, you know, papers and posters they may not see, but those areas of social media they will definitely see. So have you considered that?
So this is more about targeting the older age groups, the adults in the vaccine programme as opposed to children. However, where children are eligible, we would obviously be picking that up through parents, but mostly this is around the adult programme because the schools programmes have been running in terms of encouraging take-up. Of course, at the moment, the take-up is, I think it's at fifty plus at the moment, so don't quote me, but I think that it's being done in batches around age groups. So where we are, we're trying to target those age groups at the moment, but where we pick up other people, we are ensuring that if they're within the category that can have the vaccine, then we would ensure that they are through that. But there's been a huge massive schools programme which has dealt with vaccine. But at the moment, the current vaccine is in the fifty pluses. I think that's where we're at now. And I would like to say I've had mine, but of course I am fifty plus, so that's the only reason I know. I'm a bit more over the other side, but I think it is down to fifty now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this was for reporting only. Thank you. So we move on to the next one. Oh, okay, all right. So we'll move back to point seven, update urgent care centre in Reading. We have somebody online and the other person is in here, so.
Hello, hi. Can I confirm that you can all hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you introduce yourself both please so that we can hear you clearly? Thank you.
Yes, so my name is Sarah Webster. I recently joined as the Berkshire West Executive Place Director within the NHS Integrated Care Board. And my colleague Helen will just introduce herself if she's able to.
Yeah, thanks Sarah, thank you. So I'm Helen Clark. I'm one of the Associate Directors of Primary Care, focusing on Berkshire West.
So thank you for inviting us to your meeting today. We're just going to give a quick overview of the urgent care centre pilot that we are procuring at the moment and then we will open for any questions for members in the room. So Helen is just going to share her screen with a few slides that will be circulated after the meeting with the minutes and then we'll go from there.
Thank you Sarah, just bear with me one second, I'm just sharing my screen.
Thank you.
Okay, you should be able to see that now?
Excellent, thank you Helen. So Helen, could you go on to the first slide?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, can I just ask if that's worked?
Yes, we've seen the slide show, so we can move on to the first slide. Thank you and thank you for your patience in the room as well.
Sorry, I'm just trying to move it on.
What I'll do is I'll start, I'll start talking and then if the slides catch up, then that's great. But essentially what we're trying to, what we wanted to demonstrate today is that demand is high currently for primary care services. You'll all be very familiar with that message. Since currently compared to just before the pandemic, we're seeing about just over an eight percent increase across Berkshire West in demand for primary care contacts each month, which is a, as you all know, a significant increase. At the same time, we are continuing to see quite high demand for what we describe as urgent care type activity coming through the system. So this being activity around minor illnesses or one-on-one referrals on to same-day GP appointments and also significant demand for the out-of-hours GP service being Westcall, who are reporting about an eleven, between eleven and thirteen percent increase in activity at the moment compared to last year. So what this tells us is that there really is demand for a service to meet the needs of this urgent care type activity within Berkshire West as a system. So prior to COVID-19, you'll be familiar, we had the Reading Walk-in Centre, which saw approximately a hundred walking patients per day. That's the sort of service where it's, as it says on the tin, patients could literally walk, walk in on the day and didn't need to necessarily be registered with a GP to access that service. About just under half of those attendees were Reading-based patients, although a percentage of attendees didn't have any GP registration at all. One of the other challenges with that service is that the Walk-in Centre wasn't able to access the full record for the individual who attended. So they could provide immediate care on the day, but weren't able to access the background and summary care record for that individual. So that meant that the patient had to return to their own GP for ongoing care, onward referrals, et cetera. So it wasn't as efficient as it could have been. When the COVID pandemic hit, the Walk-in Service was suspended to accommodate the COVID respiratory hub. However, there is a registered list element, so the Walk-in Service also ran your more traditional style GP registered list and that continued to run. The Walk-in Service has remained suspended as the focus had been on encouraging patients to access care from their own GP practice. But as I stated at the start, there is still a clear demand for that sort of on-the-day urgent care type service that currently is putting pressure on our emergency department and GP practices across the Berkshire West patch. So Helen, can you move on to the next one? So what we are looking to pilot initially to see if we can build on the learning from the Walk-in Centre, but hopefully do something that has some additional benefits, is we're looking to pilot a urgent care centre for minor illnesses that we are, with the intention that that starts next month and runs for an eighteen-month period. We can then review and assess whether this slightly improved model is, or we're hoping will be a slightly improved model, is actually delivering those benefits that we hope it will do. And at that point, we can make a long-term decision around what model of walk-in urgent care centre type service we want to be providing locally to get the biggest benefit for our population. So the key elements of the urgent care centre service that we're looking to pilot is it's going to be based in central Reading again. We don't have a confirmed location yet, but that was one of the requirements, we want this to be central Reading-based, open twelve hours a day, seven days a week. It will be GP-led but staffed by a multidisciplinary team as we have in general practice now, so that's nursing and other clinical colleagues. Capacity to see up to a hundred patients a day. So at the moment, we are, there can be flexibility in that depending how it all pans out, but the aim is that we'll have fifty walk-ins, which allows for capacity for fifty patients to be referred from the emergency department or from primary care where particular pressures may be being felt on any given day. And the hope is that it provides that support to the current highly pressured services. And the real benefit is that this urgent care service will be able to have full access to the patient records. So that means the full episode of care can be completed. And we are also able to encourage anyone who attends to the urgent care centre who isn't registered with a local GP, will be able to support them there to register. That's a requirement of the, for the provider who will be providing this service so that hopefully going forward. So that hopefully going forwards, we can encourage greater uptake of GP registration. And it's funded from the previous Walk-in Centre budget. So the previous service will remain suspended whilst this pilot is underway. And as I said, we'll then review the effectiveness of this model and go, at that point, the likelihood is we'll then go to long-term procurement for the, a suitable long-term service. I want to just separate as well, we will continue to re-procure that registered list element I mentioned a while ago. So we're not going to lose that vital registered GP service that the previous Walk-in Centre was kind of co-providing. That will continue and will be procured separately. So we're keeping those two things separate. So in addition to this, there's an awful lot of work going on to do other improvements to access to primary care and on the day, on the daycare, not necessarily just primary care. As we all know, that there are a range of services that are suitable for, for our population to access when they feel they need to speak to a healthcare professional. So some of it's listed here on this slide. I'll briefly talk to each point and then we can open up to discussion and questions. So we are doing further monitoring around all of the access indicators. What that means is looking at information and feedback from patients to understand how they are finding it, whether it's easy or not to access primary care and where we might be able to make improvements to that. And we're working closely with Health Watch Reading on this. It's really important that we do hear a really clear voice of, of patients and service users in this. We're working with our primary care networks to extend connected care, which is our sort of interlinked system, to help us better take data out of the system so that we have a better understanding of demand and patient utilisation to help us plan, our capacity planning better. What we're looking to try and do as well is further encourage referrals to our community pharmacy consultation service. As we know, our, we've got an awful lot of highly skilled pharmacists that are often a very, very good first point of call for an awful lot of ailments that currently are coming through primary care and sometimes the emergency department. There is a service where 111 and GPs are able to refer to an on-the-day appointment with pharmacy. And there is some underutilised capacity there. So we're looking to see how we can encourage further uptake. We are looking to improve the telephony as a number of GP practices and rolling that out to again, hopefully improve access for patients at those practices. There's a further 12 of those in Reading going live this financial year. We're doing a lot of communication with the public around winter messaging, so how to access these services, what to focus on from a self-care perspective and how to use the NHS app. We are looking to implement revised arrangements for enhanced access. So this is where practices are working together to provide a broader timeframe for appointments, so up to 8pm on Saturdays. And by linking up IT systems, that will help with that as well and help resilience across the, the primary care network. Another comms campaign around registration, making sure everyone's registered with a GP, particularly focusing on young males who frequently flag as the, the, the group of our population who are less likely to be registered with a GP. And then doing a lot of work around peer support approaches between practices, GP practices. And quite an interesting digital literacy programme to support our, our, our local population to use online access methods because we can't make the mistake of assuming everyone is digitally literate and can use these ways to access care. So to avoid exclusion indirectly, there's work going on to make sure that we can support people where they need to, to access these services. So that was a, a bit of a whistle-stop overview of the, the pilot and some broader initiatives for primary care. My colleague Helen has been working very closely in the detail of this all as well. So we'd be delighted to open up to any questions, if there are any following, following that. And thank you very much again for giving us the opportunity to come and talk to you about this.
Oh, thank you very much, Sarah and Helen. So any questions? We'll start with councillor McQuinn here.
Thank you for that presentation. That was, you know, very informative, a lot of useful information there. And there's a lot to go through, but just, I really like the, the idea of the registration campaign. I think you've mentioned working with younger, younger men, which is really useful. And also the digital literacy, which I think is, you know, very important at the moment and a lot of information. I just wanted some further information about GP provision. And you touched on it, but just in terms of, obviously, it's an increase in properties being developed in, in the area in Reading and what we're doing to ensure that we do have enough GP provision in Reading. Thank you.
Helen, did you want to come in on that one? Because I know we were just talking about that very recently.
Yes, that's right. So I think that's a very important point. We do work closely with the planning department to understand likely population growth as a result of housing development. We are in the process of updating those plans, sorry, our plans at the moment, and have just made, we knew contact with the planning team and they've just provided us with updated data. So we need to review our estates plans against those. We're also working with our PCNs currently through a national programme with the National Association of Primary Care, whereby they are doing a piece of work called an Estates Toolkit, which is really considering what their clinical models are likely to look like going forward, what they will need in, in terms of estates and opportunities to work with other services to meet those needs. So it's very much an iterative and ongoing process, but I would assure you that we are linked in, in with planning. And as I say, we've just had updated data, which we're in the process of reviewing.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor Kim.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for your presentation. That was very insightful and very helpful. You mentioned that the centre will be staffed by GPs and MDT. I'm guessing because for, for people who aren't registered with GPs often fall through the gaps in terms of social care provision as well. And I'd wondered whether there might be scope or consideration for social care staff to be included in the MDT, such as social prescribers, who would be invaluable to, to this service.
To answer that one, Sarah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. So I think at the moment, it's, I, I, I'm not, I don't think we've got social care and social prescribing included in the, in the model. It's absolutely something we need to look to explore, unless Helen does correct me on that one. But that's the, the benefits of having this as a fluid pilot is we can identify what exactly the need is for this sort of service and make sure it's then incorporated as we go forward. There is, as I said as well, that there's definitely going to be a service to support individuals to register with their local GP. So then we can wrap those very local services around them in a way that is most appropriate. But unless Helen wants to, wanted to come in on that point as well, it's something we can consider.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's right. So it's not an explicit requirement of the, the service provider. I mean, I think Sarah mentioned we're in the process of procuring the service at the moment. But we have asked questions around integration, links with partners and the approach to sort of patient support and patient education. And we're looking very much for a holistic approach whereby we're talking about this sort of making every contact count approach and really thinking about what other services might be able to support the patients that are coming in. So I think it's in, in broad terms, absolutely that, that's within the scope of the model. But we need to work through the detail as we move through the pilot as Sarah has described.
Oh, thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Yeah, hello. I'm John Ennis. I'm League Councillor for Adult Social Care. And I thank Sarah and Helen for the presentation. I was going to go on for that. My question was going to be, where does adult social care fit, given that it's important that we work together? Because we're seeing the same patients, quite frankly, in different stages from hospital out to primary care in the community. Our demand is high. And I would urge you to seriously consider, you know, looking at planning with adult social care to fit in the model because the, the demand is high and that's where the pressure is. As you know, the government, whichever previous government, I won't go into that, this is, this is too important to try and play politics, is talking about integration with adult social care and, and health. And therefore I would like to see the, the model, you know, the process, what you're doing, the pilot, to actually take that into, into consideration. Also, the other question about prevention as well, because that would be helpful, wouldn't it? As much prevention as possible. And I would say adult social care would be pretty much able to support you on the methods of, you know, of prevention before getting into urgent care. I don't know what your views on that is. I know you, the previous question. But I would urge you to really seriously think about a link-up because it's the same people and, and I think it would benefit. I think the pilot would benefit from a, a link-up approach with adult social care. I'd like to hear what your views are. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to reassure you and colleagues in the room, we are working probably closer than ever with social care colleagues. We are as part of the, the, the place arrangements and the place-based partnership that, that are currently being established. That's a joint programme between health and social care. And the idea is that we are working almost as one going forwards as far as possible. We attend the integration boards and work very closely to make sure we are jointly planning for things such as prevention, avoidance. So I'd like to offer that reassurance and there's always room for improvement as well. So we're looking at, are there any other ways that we can work more closely together to, in a way, blur the boundaries between health and social care wherever we can do, noting that, as you say, we are almost always dealing with the same people and often it will improve the service that we can give to those patients if we are able to have a more streamlined, joined-up service. With regards to the specific urgent, question around urgent care, as Helen said, yes, the, the service specification does suggest this. We are also mindful of the, the pressures on colleagues working within social care. And so learning from the pilot will inform to what extent bringing that capacity into this model is beneficial. But having access to the shared care record will be vital here as well because that will be able to show the practitioners in the urgent care centre what contacts the individual is having with the various services in the system to make sure it is joined up and, and streamlined so that when they're able to refer to onward services, it's complementary to what services that that individual may already be receiving, whether that's health or social care.
Councillor Ennis, you wanted to come back?
Come back if that's okay. Thanks for that. Very much appreciated. Is there scope to report back on that? To, to adult social care officers to, to report back on, on what links they're going to, there are going to be within the pilot with social care and the reassurance? What, when will that be? Will that be written in with the pilot?
Yeah, can I answer that? So, so absolutely. I mean, we're still in the procurement phase at, at the moment. Once we've identified a provider, we'll move towards mobilising the service. And we'll be looking at key aspects of the specification with them in more detail at that stage. So that will include the links with partners that, that I've already alluded to and how those are going to work in practice. So I think we would want to discuss those with social care colleagues with respect to that particular link that you've highlighted. So I hope it will be an ongoing dialogue. I think we'd be very happy to bring a further update to this committee or to, to another meeting as appropriate, once the pilot is up and running. And then obviously, as we move through the pilot and get towards evaluation, we would be seeking views from, from wider colleagues as, as to how it's working and how that informs our, our planning for, for whatever comes into place after the pilot. But yeah, very happy to do, to liaise as we mobilise and also to do an update once the service is up and running, if that would be helpful.
Be brief, councillor Ennis.
It's my light. Oh, I thought you banned me. Thanks ever so much. I really appreciate that. I think that'd be really important to come back to this committee. I think that'd be good for members, certainly councillors to hear that. I think the importance as well is to, well, I think it's, it's imperative that the officers you go working through straight away with the procurement process and everything with officers. And then we can get a good report back. I think that's key in my book, if that's all right. But thank you. I will stop now.
Thank you. Councillor Dennis, and then I'll come to councillor Govan for you.
Thank you. That was a really good report, really good update, really encouraging to hear, you know, so many good things coming out of this. And I look forward to the, the pilot update once it's been completed. I just wanted one quick question about mental health because that wasn't mentioned. And I know a lot of people, especially, you know, during this COVID time, especially young people have urgent care for mental health and there is a long waiting list. And have you made provision for if they are, you know, if they do turn up? Have you got links in place with the mental health? That was just something to think about. And also linking up with their systems, because I know, as you said, you're looking at integration across all systems. And I know it's difficult to hook up with the NHS and with the council and with mental health because of the different barriers that they have in their firewalls, et cetera.
Helen. So shall I answer and then perhaps if Sarah could chip in? So with, yeah, so with, with regard to the service offered to patients, it, it should be similar or as close as possible to, or would be offered by a GP practice. So that would include making links and referring patients on to mental health services if appropriate. So that, that would, would be, be my answer in that respect. With regard to the access to information, still a work in progress. But we are hoping that the service will have full access to patients' GP records. That may not be from day one, but we're hoping it will be in the, you know, within a few weeks at that sort of time scale. And again, that will enable them to provide as full a service as possible. Having said that, the focus, this isn't intended to be a replacement for GP practices. And so there will be a focus on patient education, making sure that patients know how to access their practice, that they've registered with a practice, as, as we've already outlined, if they don't already have one. But on the day that they're actually being seen, the intention is to provide as holistic care as possible. That access to the GP record will provide the health information. We, we're working through what access they will have to connected care and interoperability between different parts of the system within that service. So that, that's detail that we're still working through. But hopefully that, that explains what our aspirations are around the information that, that the practitioners will have available.
Thank you. Councillor Govan.
Thank you, Chair. I was unclear about, obviously, this is a walk-in centre, so people walk in. But will 111 also be referring people to the service instead of to the hospital? So for instance, at the weekends, they run a kind of GP-type service, don't they, at the hospital? I've forgotten what it's called now, but, but I, I do remember when my children were younger, we spent many a happy Sunday waiting for antibiotics for something or another. So is 111 going to be linked in? In other words, are all parts of this system going to be linked together? Thank you.
Yes. So in the short term, so I've got a bit of echo, in the short term, no, so not initially. But over time, we have said we will explore with the provider the potential for them to take bookings from 111 and referrals for 111 in the same way that the GP practices can.
Okay. Can I ask a question also? I'm very much interested in something that you talked about, the app, the NHS app. And there's a concern among the elderly, the people with neurodiversity and people with second languages, that it has become exclusionary in the sense that NHS is moving more to the app and the internet and all these other things, leaving those people without much to communicate through and all that. What's the provision of highlighting? And we also, as you know, in Reading, have a, a high number of refugees placed by government in this area. Some who might, you might call, not yet documented, but they need access because they're staying in, in Reading and they're staying in hotels. How are you making provision for, for, for people like that? So that when they come, they, they are not actually excluded or the app doesn't exclude most people. Thank you.
So I can answer that one on the, more broadly, and then Helen might want to comment specifically on the, the individual initiative. But one of our, our, our big commitments across health and linked in with social care through the, and your joint health and wellbeing strategies. one of our big commitments across health and linked in with social care through the, and your joint health and wellbeing strategies is to ensure that we are placing an awful lot of focus on health inequalities. And part of that is making sure we don't make inadvertently create inequalities by digital exclusion, as you say. So it's always a key consideration for any service when we are looking to move things to be more digitally focused is, but what is the provision for those who aren't digitally savvy, digitally enabled? So the example of being sort of not automatically opting into digital services, making sure that paper services are still available where that is preferred by the individual, letters rather than texts or emails. And these are all broad principles that we are adhering to, to make sure that we don't end up with potentially large cohorts of our population who feel excluded through digital and technology advances. There are these specific literacy programmes, literacy hubs, places where people can go, we're looking, hopefully, where people can go to, to get support and walk through how to use laptops or a computer to be able to access services. And Helen might want to come in on that a bit more. But as a general principle, that is absolutely something that we have in mind.
You know, I would just say I'd absolutely endorse everything that Sarah said around that. It's still about providing options and making sure that the particular groups aren't excluded. We've got work to support those that want to to use online but need some support in doing so, to be supported in that way. And we're working with a number of our practices and providing sort of training and resources into them that they can then use to pass on with training and supporting patients. And I think the other side of this is also about capacity. So clearly, there are, you know, large numbers of patients who are willing and able to use the app for things like repeat prescription orders, sometimes booking nurse appointments and things like that with primary care. And that does then free up capacity on the phone for those that can't and still prefer to try and phone. So there's that component too. But absolutely, we also need to make sure that anyone who wants to use online is supported to do so.
Okay, thank you. You didn't get to my point about like in Oxford Road, we have a lot of refugees living in hotels that the government has put there in this accessing this place when you have it, it will be vital. How are you going to manage to do that? Because some of them actually don't have recourse to public funds. They are still waiting.
So do you want to answer that one, Sarah, or I can?
Um, yes. So as a, as a general principle, anyone who requires on the day urgent care will receive it regardless of their funding status. So that is, that's the principle of the NHS. So there will not be exclusions from this service based on whether someone has recourse or not. And we are going to be putting comms out to inform people about this service. It's getting the balance right between encouraging appropriate use of this service whilst also encouraging appropriate use of registered GPs and surgeries where individuals are. But making sure that vulnerable groups who may not feel that they can access those services can come to this service or to A and E when they need to.
Yeah, I think that's right. And again, just reiterating that the service will be set up to support people to register with a GP practice where they need that support. And I think that's a really important component. We're not envisaging this being a place where people regularly go. We're hoping that they're provided with support for their same day care needs, but then also advice with regard to registration. And we're looking at how staff within the service will be able to sit with people and register them that hopefully they're there and then, particularly as online registration methods build.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, go on, councillor Kim.
Sorry, just a last quick question. So you haven't, we don't know where the location is going to be yet. Do we have any timescales of when the service will actually be open and up and running?
Um, yes. So we're hoping at the moment that the service will be up and running in November. We want it to get up and running as soon as possible so that we can support, as we know, will be increasing demand over winter. Some of that will be dependent on the ability of the chosen provider to mobilise as quickly as possible. But that is the timeframe that was set as part of the process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Sarah and Helen. Thank you for this. I hope it stays. It's not just a pilot. It's very much needed in Reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we are moving on to item number nine, safeguarding adults' annual reports. Oh, okay. Thanks.
Good evening, councillors. So the report that's contained in the papers this evening is the Reading Borough Council contribution to the overarching safeguarding adults' report. West Berkshire has host, well, Reading actually hosts the arrangement, safeguarding adult arrangement across the West Berkshire patch. So that's us, Wokingham and West Berkshire Council together. What you, what you have is our contribution. The Safeguarding Board is a strategic partnership board and all organisations supply a individual detailed report, which then forms part of a wider published overarching report. And there's a legal responsibility of the Safeguarding Board to produce an annual report. Hopefully, the covering report also explains that of what's the, you know, what's the rationale behind it really. I guess just some key points really. As you can see, the data does show significant demand on our safeguarding adults' arrangements. And whilst the local authority definitely has a lead coordinating role, we certainly want to convey the message that safeguarding is absolutely everybody's responsibility. And obviously, our focus on prevention is really key. Clearly, we want to prevent people from coming to harm in the first place and doing everything we can to support them. And with and also working with adults at the centre, so making sure that any decisions are centred around their wishes and their views. And obviously, not made not made without them as featuring and being central to the decision. I've also attached our internal delivery plan. So hopefully, that outlines for you the areas that we'll be focusing on this year. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with councillor Ennis and then I'll come to.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for, thank you. It's a very comprehensive report. It's a report, as Joe said, goes in strategic partnership of Wokingham and West Berkshire. We work together as three. And we meet as a safeguarding adults' board to note and recommend that action and support that. And I think it's important, as Joe said, to note an increase in safeguarding concerns. You know, safeguarding adults isn't as established as safeguarding children, but it's becoming more and more apparent where we're seeing older people, more vulnerable people now, you know, open to neglect, open to being groomed or manipulated, to be financially negatively impacted by others, including family, members and, you know, so called friends and whatever, and neighbours. We see the cases are increasing on a national basis over a period of time. And I think this report really reflects the work that's going on and the maturity as far as Reading's concerned and our strategic partners in dealing with safeguarding adults and the time and the effort and the priority that becomes. Agencies are encouraged to report within the defined threshold, which has been agreed on, like you're saying, Joe, across our strategic partners of Wokingham and West Berkshire, though we have our own threshold. The threshold is different, or not so much different, but maybe there's more acute need in a town, a large town like Reading than it would be in other areas. Agencies are encouraged to report, which they've done. And more and more, we're seeing increased, you know, cases in increased reporting of cases. You know, increased alleged abuse, neglect, but also increase in alleged abuse and neglect in residential homes and acute hospital settings, although the numbers are small. I think then that's a pattern as well, which is growing and growing. And I do know, and I think there'll be obviously discussion around this, that whilst the reporting's increased, the safeguarding section 42 inquiries have fallen. And I'm sure there'll be some discussion around this coming forwards. I welcome page 11542, wherever it is, I've got it here. Certainly welcome that, improving the future of safeguarding adults in Reading. Welcome the front door. I think the front door, you know, someone who's involved in safeguarding children is different, but at the same time, the way the process would work, I would say, would have similarities. And the front door is, is something that we, we need to, you know, move process further and progress. Because once the front door is established through the thresholding, there can be, professionals can have consistent assessment and, you know, reporting and consistency. I think that's really good. I think understanding the thresholds with our agencies is important. Police ambulance services, voluntary sector and statutory partners. There would be concerns about safeguarding and reports, but wouldn't necessarily reach the threshold. And I think that's important that we get that right. I want to raise the point, which, I mean, councillor Dennis Collette has raised in earlier about ethnicity. That's something that we would need to focus on and work on as a town, a multicultural, very diverse town of Reading, that, you know, many ethnicities and it's there on page 128 are less likely to be engaged in the process of safeguarding than than other groups. And I think that's something that we would have to really prioritise as to why that may be the case. Because there could be people who are isolated, who are vulnerable, who are being abused and are afraid or not able through either, you know, language barriers, through all sorts of communication to report to safeguard. And so we want to make sure that every resident in Reading is able to and confident to report safeguarding. Because what we want to get to at the end of the day, and I will finish on this, is that we want to create a culture of reporting safeguarding links to thresholds where professionals can deal with and resolve to a positive outcome. So we want to encourage reporting of safeguarding where we can then deal with and get a positive outcome. So thank you for the report and note recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Did you want to come in on that?
If I may, yes, thank you. Completely endorse the point around the front door. So the sort of objective behind that really was to support our partners actually with that decision making and really not expect them to be able to necessarily make a distinction between what is their care and support need and what is a safeguarding issue. So hopefully, they've got one sort of route really into the service. So the report is retrospective because obviously it's 2122 and it covers this year's action. So I can confirm that we have got that in place now. We have got that contact centre as our single point of contact and it is having inroads. And I think it's really, really important that we are able to provide feedback and support. Because if somebody sends a referral and they don't hear, then obviously that doesn't help them next time. So it's certainly an objective of the team to make sure that we're supporting our partners in terms of that decision making. And as you say, we'd rather receive a referral that wasn't necessarily perhaps in scope. But certainly, it would usually involve somebody with care and support needs and they've, so then we can help and support them and assess their needs.
Thank you, councillor Davies. And then I'll go to councillor Ocon.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms Lappin, if I my waving was like putting you off before. So I just wanted to dive in a little bit deeper into this on page 115. Obviously, what leaps out to people who read this covering report is the fact that we've got the concerns raises doubled. But fewer of them, as a proportion, are going on to to be actual, actually, you know, passed on and raises section 42 inquiries. I mean, are we to interpret that as a success in our encouraging people to come forward and blow whistles, et cetera, when they have concerns, which is what we want? And that's what we would feel, obviously, is, you know, that what we feel is the obvious conclusion of that. But I wondered if you could sort of discuss how that, you know, is that heading us in the right direction that we want? We want that? Obviously, there's a, there's a a level of threshold that those need to meet. Those will be applied to them. But of course, we want to, we want a culture, and I think councillor Ennis has said, we want a culture where people will come forward if they have concerns. I think we might come on to what impact that might have on the resources that you have to deal with them and triage them. But yeah, is it shining a light in places that there hasn't been a light shone before? Should we, should we interpret it positively is my question really?
Thank you. Yes, I would definitely say it's a positive because it means that people are recognising issues. They're inquisitive around what's happening for somebody. They're not turning a blind eye. You know, they're reporting something, they're taking the trouble and time to contact us about that person. What we see is a lot of these referrals come from our colleagues in the ambulance service and the police. And we've recently had some very positive meetings with them to really work through how, you know, how are officers out, you know, 11 o'clock at night, two in the morning, how are they able to make those clear decisions really in terms of what's the risk that needs referring to us and what isn't? So we've made some good progress with them. And that's where a lot of those, what we call out of scope referrals come from. Where they'll, it's almost like a snapshot. So they'll see somebody for a moment in time, particularly the ambulance service. And they obviously don't necessarily have a long history. So actually, referring in really helps us because then we can gather the relevant information, talk to the person, you know, establish what their needs are and work with them. So it's never a wrong referral. It's, it's, you know, it's the appropriate thing to do to let us know about the person. And sometimes there are issues around consent that we need to obviously work through. We really we have to make sure that we've got the individual's consent. And if we don't have them, we've got the legal gateway that allows us to retain information about them. But yes, in the main, I would say it's a positive. But there is lots of work to do to help and support education really for our partners.
Thank you, councillor Ocon.
Um, thank you. I think I'm sort of asking a question around the same statistics. So it is about the number of concerns converting to the safeguarding inquiry that's down on 115. Falling to 13% compared with 31% the previous year, where the national average is 34% almost. So is this drop due to the increased number of referrals? So is it just a sort of statistical thing? And when it's, but if that, if that's the case, why aren't other areas receiving a similar sort of shift, I suppose, is part of it? And I mean, it might well be because we're doing something that is way better and different to other councils. But I suppose I'm just looking for reassurance on that, that, you know, we haven't we don't, we're not turning away people that at one point we would have accepted and worked with. Also, if we are, if we have raised the threshold and you know, perhaps are doing that, are we keeping track of how many people are re-referred to our service? Do we, you know, are we keeping those statistics to sort of check ourselves against? And and make sure we're not missing an early opportunity to sort of work with people? Does that make sense? Thank you.
Yes, it does. It does. And I think I think there's all sorts of facets to it, really. It's a complex area. Probably what I think was, and when we look at the national data, although the average is 30%, it does vary hugely actually. So some, it's as low as 8% in some areas and 64, I think it is in others. So it does, you know, when you look at the national dataset, that shows a very varied picture. I mean, it's something we've never necessarily got absolutely right. We've continued to work on it and you know, we do see variance. I think Covid probably had a slight impact in some of that because obviously things changed for all sorts of organisations and agencies and maybe people weren't being seen. You know, there wasn't necessarily. So some of that, I think, is now much more that people are more visible. We're getting out to services, we're, you know, back into care homes, et cetera. So that's really, you know, positive. And in terms of the checking, yes, we do, we do. And in terms of the checking, yes, we do, we do scrutinise our data really carefully. Um because, you know, as you say, we need to make sure we're not missing anybody and that we're looking for those circumstances where where it may be a repeated. Issue, because that's often actually in the context of safeguard safeguarding, it can be repeated reports. That we're receiving. So so we do, yeah, we do scrutinise our data carefully around those areas.
Um so would you be hoping that it stays at thirteen percent? Would you be expecting that to change, given, as I say, the. And I agree with you, the the massive weird situation of Covid, which let's hope we don't see again. But um I I do appreciate that variable could not be anticipated. Do we want to keep it at thirteen or do we feel it should be higher? Um.
Hmm. We don't want to keep it at thirteen, no. We want it to be much, much higher really, because that would. Enable us to use our resources more effectively. The teams spend a lot of time sort of having to um screen information. Which actually doesn't, and if the person hasn't even been asked what they would like to happen, that's often what we see. The box isn't ticked in relation to the person's consent. So then we obviously approach them and and ask them what would happen. And quite often they say, I don't want anything to happen. And we have to respect that. So so I think, yeah, we definitely want to see it change um and move into the, you know, much higher really.
Thank you councillor Govan.
No need. My my um question has been covered by councillor McDonald. Uh so thank you.
Uh councillor Kin.
Thank you. Um yeah, so part of this that I'm I'm quite interested in is the um the grant uh for uh to to support people who are hoarding and. Uh around self neglect. So and I understand that there's been quite an extensive project in in the borough to support people who who uh. Um need the support around managing hoarding and resolving. Um I wondered if you could give us an update or on how successful that's been. Um any plans for the future to continue this sort of work?
Of course, yes, thank you. I'm so pleased you phrased that actually, because it really demonstrates the work we try to do around prevention. And, you know, we are a reactive service and we have to respond to what's in front of us, but we also need to keep our energy on preventing harm and obviously supporting people. Um upstream as well. That's been a really positive, successful project. Um we've had a really um. Really good multi-agency approach to it. So we've had the support of the fire service, environmental health. Um housing have obviously been really key to it. Um we've got quite a tenacious um manager who's who's. Sort of leading the service. So she's currently um scoping and trying to find some additional funding to make sure that we can retain it and keep it going. And we've seen some really, really good examples. I think I came to a previous committee and showed some of the photographs of. Some of our positive experiences around that. So um we're really proud of that piece of work.
Hmm hmm. Thank you. Uh I just wanted to go to um page one thirty one. There's um. Something mentioned about the principal social worker. Is there a named person when producing this document or are you? Are you uh trying to find one?
No, we've got one. Um so we're really pleased. We have um Jane Hitching, who is an experienced principal social worker. She's worked in other authorities. In the same role. Um and she's actually making some really good inroads now with with our practice around safeguarding. Um supporting decision making um and and really helping the team in terms of their operating processes.
Okay. Is it, is it okay when uh the proper report comes out to name the person, which makes sense? Or is there a reason why you didn't put a name?
We usually just refer to roles. We don't normally put names, just in case the personnel change changes across across time.
Okay. And another point, sorry to go on, I'm taking my privileges chair. On the point, because I'm looking at the aspirations for twenty twenty two to twenty three. One of the points you said, which has been mentioned several times, even with the NHS and wedding and all that, is about the inequalities. That are happening. How are you able to be meeting the groups uh that you've mentioned here, the Black Asian and. Uh some ethnic communities to raise awareness of of all this? How are you going to be doing that?
Yeah, so that's definitely a priority area. Um and to some extent, uh we need to. Do sort of public relations really, because some of this is outside of our control. So what we receive as a referral, obviously we respond to that and react to that. Um but we need to make sure that we're reaching out to different groups and communities and raise awareness of safeguarding, what it can do, you know, what's. What's the benefits of and the positives and also hearing about the barriers. So what is it actually that people feel? Perhaps, you know, anxious about or unclear about or need information on. So it's um, it's an objective for. For the team manager of the safeguarding team to certainly do that work. She's made some um positive steps already um working with colleagues in. In her counterpart in the NHS. We feel we really need to reach GPs. Around that as well, because that's quite as, you know, people sometimes present first within the context of an NHS service of some description or another. The hospital team as well. So we've been, we've been working through the safeguarding leads group to to raise awareness and and, you know, obviously. Um highlight what a significant issue it is and how we need to prioritise it collectively, really.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much. Are you doing the next one or somebody else is coming? Okay, so we are going on to the number, uh item number ten, adult social care complaints report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Uh my name is Niana George. I'm the customer relations and information governance manager. Um the first report I'm going to present is the adult social care. Complaints and compliments activity and performance report for April twenty one to March twenty two. Um so during this period, um the service received twenty corporate complaints. And um which is seventeen point six percent increase over the previous year where we received seventeen. Of the twenty complaints, eighteen progressed to a formal investigation and sixty seven, sixty six point seven percent were responded to in timescale. We received ninety three statutory complaints, which was it, um which is an, which is a thirty one percent increase over the seventy one received in the previous year. Um fifty of these were resolved informally, forty three progressed to formal investigation. And fifty five point eight percent of these were responded within time scales. Um the main themes that we saw coming through were around quality of the service provided, financial issues. Some around staff conduct and communication. In terms of the social care ombudsman um complaints for that for that year, we received seven representations from. Uh dissatisfied service users. Um and two of these, um this is two more than the previous year. Uh three of these were investigated by the ombudsman and upheld. Two cases were referred back to the council to investigate as they were premature. And two were assessed and not investigated. Um the summary, um there's a further summary on appendix A. Um in terms of breakdowns and tables, but I'm happy to accept any questions at this stage.
Okay, uh any questions? And. Oh councillor Ennis.
Yeah, thank you. Um I want to thank Niamh, actually done for us sterling work over the years um in bringing these reports. Uh I think this must be a most difficult period for you to, you know, for to staff to operate. Um adult social care staff to operate and professionals, you know, with the situation of budget pressures, but also Covid. Has made it difficult and we shouldn't be surprised of the increases, given the um the pressure um of the period. That shouldn't act though as a, as a reason or an excuse. And I I really. Like the acknowledgement and the transparency uh of the report in a public arena. I think that's. So important to do that, to to show residents, to show members cross party. Of the complaints, the nature of the complaints, the numbers, uh and also to compare in previous years. And I think we also need to acknowledge the pain and negative impact. Some of the cases which we won't mention. Uh have endured, have endured. Um and and the need to improve, the need to learn. Uh in an open and transparent manner. And I know, I think the report is incredibly transparent. Uh and easy to access and easy to interpret. Um so I think we need to be concentrating on that. And making sure we can get stuff right next year uh and and improve on that. But I welcome the report very much. I think it would be amiss. Not to mention the compliments, the ten compliments, and they're really nice, some of them. The locality team seem to be, you know, getting compliments, but there's ten there. Uh and it's um, and that's good to to see that. Um but certainly the most important part is to acknowledge your report, the need to learn, the need to get. Uh complaints dealt within a timely manner, um you know, to try and improve that figure. But also to ensure that um complaints that, and it's good that complaints come in because, you know, there's two ways of looking at complaints increase. One. Um the service needs improvement, but two, people are engaged. And what we wouldn't want. Is a lack of engagement from residents, from clients who don't see the point in complaining, who don't see. You know, we we hear that a lot with people with certain agencies that, why bother? They don't do anything. And I think it's good in many ways that people have complained, but we've got to deal with it uh and and as much as possible. Uh we shouldn't, you know, I'm not saying we welcome increased complaints, but I think it's good in many ways that. Residents and clients have have actually come forwards. It's the best way to learn uh and improve our practice. So very much welcome report and welcome recommendation and note. And thank you for your work, Niamh, that you've done over the years.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you very much. And um also, I'd like to thank you for the report. And councillor Ennis knows that I agree with him wholeheartedly that. If we are running an open and transparent organisation, which hopefully we are, we should be receiving complaints. That that's the sign of a healthy system where we're open um to compliments, of course, but complaints. Ways that we can continuously be improving ourselves. And if residents um and service users don't tell us they're dissatisfied. Then we'll just keep making the same mistakes. So, you know, I would like to see an increase in the constructive complaints that we get. My actual question's really, really short. It's it's a teeny tiny one. Um but how can there be no outcome? On um some of the complaints. Um and does that mean we're waiting for an outcome? Uh. Or, yeah, I just don't see how there can be no outcome on any complaint.
So um we record a no outcome where there's um. A difference of opinion and where it can't be substantiated. So we've got the complainant. Saying one thing and maybe an officer or a provider saying another, um saying quite the contrary. So there's no way to evidence an outcome. So we record that as a no outcome.
Thank you for that. That's that's interesting. Thank you. Um do we do anything with that? Or?
When you say, um so all the complaints are reviewed by the director. Um and and all the learning from those um individual complaints are picked up. So whether it has an outcome, whether it's upheld or not. If there is learning for the organisation, that is picked up and and um actioned by the service. So if there's any, you know, even though there might not be an outcome, there might still be some learning and service improvements that are required.
Thank you. That's really reassuring. Thank you.
Uh oh, I think uh Sunny, you wanted to add to this complaint thing. Go ahead.
No, thank you, Chair. And and thank you, Niana, for the report. It's quite detailed. So I just wanted to give the committee um some assurance. So. Obviously, all the complaints come via myself, Melissa Jo, or Shona to review before it obviously goes out to the resident or the carer. Um and certainly all our complaints now go through our quality and uh and uh quality and assurance board. Uh where our team managers all attend. So effectively, we look at the complaints and see what learning we can take from that, whether it was upheld or not. So. It allows us to embed that improvement in in our, in our, um in our practice. Um and a lot of the complaints of often miscommunication or not communicating right upfront, particularly the ones around finances, where people aren't being told about finance and things like that. Um so and I I agree with you. I I would be really worried if we didn't get any complaints, because I know that's, there's something not hidden there. Um and certainly now what we've tried to do is expand our uh service user engagement. So now I've got all the teams. Doing a random, just contacting two services every month randomly to just ask them some questions, how they perceive the service and their their thoughts. So. We can have some bit more substance on our, on our feedback. So it's not just complaints. Actually, there's other stuff coming in. Um so and also, you know, the complaints are just not just about maybe this RBC staff, but also about some of our care provision. So again, as Niana mentioned, some of the ones that maybe don't have an outcome where. The services have said X and the other ones. So we're not able to evidence. But if we can build up a trend potentially. So if we have a particular provider where we're getting constant complaints about where, and then I can talk to my commissioning team to say, actually, can you go in and have a little bit of a more of a poker round? So we've got now that quality assurance regime in place. So we're quite, quite proud of that and that that's come out with some good stuff. Um so so I think for me is um, a report like this is helpful, but also we need to uh. Get get the compliments out there and stuff like that. And then that's what we wanted to do, because it's, it's quite easy to beat up the team sometimes, but actually, there's a lot of compliments that go unmissed. Uh so that's the other thing we're trying to bring out as well as part of all of this. It's it's not just learning from the bads, but it's also learning from the goods and praising our staff when they do do good things. So um yeah, so uh thanks, Niana, for the reports and uh. I I anticipate the number of complaints to probably plateau, because I think after Covid, it it did increase, because obviously. People weren't getting the service and we did have a a big backlog of reviews and things. So. But um what I would certainly like to see this time next year, when you get the next year's report, is that all of our complaints are responded within time. And that's the one thing I've noticed this year, Niana, I hope you see, uh because Niana and I work quite closely to make sure all the complaints get out on time. Um but also, you know, we are open and honest where we are, we do have to hold our hands up and uphold complaints and say, okay, we're going to improve on that.
Thank you. Um councillor, okay councillor Duns. Oh, okay. All right. Councillor Kin.
Thanks. Um yeah, mine's just a a little comment really, because I I many, many, many years ago, I did some work with the complaints team and it was a real, real eye opener for me, who'd previously worked with the. Adult social care team. It's actually really insightful about the very small things that were complained about that actually could have been prevented just by. A timely phone call or something like that. And I've always wondered whether there's scope for actually uh as part of an induction. Programme for a new starter would actually to be, have, you know, a morning or something with the complaints team just to see. Something like that, just to have that experience.
Go ahead, Shaun.
So just just to reassure you on on that score is that we are pop, are building into the induction. Certainly, all the managers do spend time with uh with Nana's team. And um we have had in the past learning events, which we had in the town hall, which Nana ran actually with our. Previous section one five one officer and our monitoring officer. So we have done that. So there are things we would do again. Um but yes, part of the induction and and Sunny's kind of highlighted, I think, some of the learning and around the managers and that that work we're doing, because some of it's also around. Supervision with staff. So those one to one sessions with staff as well as the part of the induction process. We've also got a programme um called DAX Energize, which is really about kind of improving service. Staff wellbeing and and complaints and how to manage those a part of that, because for staff. Who come to work to do a really good job, it's really disheartening sometimes for them. They feel quite personal when when it's them that that's under complaint and they've got a senior manager asking them. What you did. Of course, that's part of our role, but we are trying to kind of, you know, it ensure that that we support staff. So that they get the right messages over through the induction process as well. And that's part of the work that that Sunny Jo and and Melissa do um within their teams.
Hmm. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Compliments?
I guess, I guess it's just, just really for 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 members to hear something on a positive note, because we do talk about this. It is. Sunny raised with me today a complaint, actually, which probably appear in next year's um report, which was was extremely challenging for for the social worker and. She'd been highly criticised and quite a good, a very good social worker, highly criticised and had taken, you know, quite a kind of beating around the complaint scenario. And she had done a really good job and it was one of those difficult scenarios of of communication and and sometimes of people not wanting to hear the message. She was giving. And I I think Sunny, we were just chatting tonight before we came down, highlighted how the service user, uh both her and her husband. Have given the social worker a gift tonight of flowers um brought down and and just kind of how how that can turn around. That that if workers work through that, they can get to the other side. Um of course, she got to declare the gift, but it's actually the the sentiment was, you know, in.
the gift, but it's actually the sentiment was, you know, in the current climate, we're dealing with families that are really struggling. That was a really kind of heartening. So I just thought, I wanted to share that, Sunny, because I think it's really important that we kind of do, that staff try to do the best they can, but don't always get it right. But we're trying, we keep trying to do that.
Oh, thank you. On a positive note, we move on to the next one, which is point 11, which is the Children's Social Care Complaints Report.
Thank you. Yes, so this is about performance for Brighter Futures, and we work with them through our service level agreement. And this is again for the same financial year. So the service received 65 statutory complaints, which is a decrease of 7.14% received in the previous year, where we had 70. Of the 65 complaints received, nine were resolved through what we call alternative dispute resolution by the social care teams. 56 progressed to formal investigations, although six of these were subsequently withdrawn by the complainant partway through the investigation. During this time, we also had 11 complaints which progressed to stage two. Some of these were results from stage ones received in the previous reporting year, and some were from this year. Of these 11, five progressed to stage three investigations or panels, as we call them. And we also received four further requests for stage three panels, although these were progressions of previous stage twos received in the previous year. Of the 50 that went through to formal investigation, 44% were responded to within timescale. And the top three that we saw for Brighter Futures was around quality of service provided or received, staff conduct, and complaints around various procedures. We work together with the Brighter Futures staff to continually raise awareness of the complaints process. And we encourage complaints from young people of, however, we know that it's the parents and carers that tend to use the procedure mostly. And we do a lot of work around raising awareness of the procedure to staff, the importance of responding on time, just like with the adult service, we run complaints training, and we're part of the induction process for new managers as well. So in terms of the local government ombudsman involvement with Brighter Futures, there was an increase from the previous year. We have 16 cases that were assessed by the ombudsman, four were investigated, three of these were upheld and one was not. Six cases had not progressed through our complaints procedures, that they were referred back to us as premature. And six cases were not within the LGSE's jurisdiction to investigate, so they were closed after assessment. We welcome complaints, and we don't, we know, like we were saying earlier, we don't think that a high number of complaints should be interpreted as being provided a poor service, because we want the complaints, we want to take away the learning and improve the services from those complaints. So like with my other report, appendix A gives you a further analysis of the data. Happy to take any questions.
Councillor Hoskin?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I think in some ways, it's quite a similar picture to the adults' report, in that I think it's a really good report, and I think probably the best thing, which is really, if you haven't had a read, do it, and that's the learning from the complaints. And it's also summarised over a couple of years, and that's really important. And the actions taken to implement that learning, which we'll see is really important as well. So that's, I think, you know, that's the best bit. As has been said, really appreciate the hard work. I know the team's been working really hard to get through the complaints and keep on top of them. I think the two things that we can do better, and this may be about, you know, we need to reflect on how we deliver this as a council, is some of the timeliness around the dealing with the complaints. I realise, you know, it's not about the team not working really hard, and also the subject access requests as well, and the time is to respond to those errors as well. Oh, the other thing that did occur to me is that the ethnicity data is actually a bit rubbish. There's, I think, the vast majority is not marked. So that's not particularly helpful in terms of understanding any issues around ethnicity and complaints. I think that's something we're going to have to, I think there's something about how ethnicity is recorded within the complaints, or be more proactive about that. But I think that's something I'll have to look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hoskin. Any other questions? Anything that you wanted to add, Joy?
I just wanted to say, yeah, it's quite difficult to capture ethnicity data, because it's quite, not everybody wants to declare their ethnicity. It's on our forms and it's on the website for them to provide us with that data if they wish to. But it's not something that we sort of can go out and specifically request, because, yeah, like I said, not everybody wants to disclose that.
Councillor Dunne's?
Yeah, on the fact of recording ethnicity and gender, et cetera, would it be possible to make it mandatory, but also put another option of other, so that people are forced to fill something in? And if they don't want to, they can put down, don't want to disclose, or something like that, to exclude, because that would be better than having an open option. People might just skip over it and say, oh, I don't need to complete this. But if they're forced to complete something in there, at least they have an option, you know, to record their proper ethnicity, or if they don't want to, just put don't want to. And that way, we can gauge what we've actually, you know, why we haven't got ethnicity down.
Yes, we will definitely explore that through our web, whether we can record that on the web form. It is on our leaflet, but quite often, people contact us direct by email through, you know, they submit their complaint to our inbox through email, so, or a letter. But we'll try and focus on it, definitely.
Thank you. Brian, you wanted to add that?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to perhaps draw from councillor Dunne's and councillor Hoskin's comments, something really important about the model which we work with our children and families in. So a trauma-informed approach is mentioned, and that's about understanding the lived experience that our families and our children have gone through to get that far. And to make a complaint in that context can often be very courageous. And there could be context, whether it's around the discriminatory context or cultural context, that we do need to pay attention to. One of the things I've implemented is the interim exec director is a further follow-up point. So every single parent or child who has made a complaint in the last year, I'm personally writing to, to try and connect and see if there's any further learning, because there might be after a period of time, but also to feedback things. For example, I'm making sure every single young person who's complained, who's been looked after, has got an invitation to join the care, to listen, Children in Care Council, making sure that any young person who's not looked after can join our Reading Youth Council, making sure parents know that we've got some consultation groups around the design of process. And one of the things we're feeding into that group is some of the information and we're saying to them, actually, we don't have this data, could you help us? Are there ways that you might wish to volunteer this data differently? Because that re-bridges back to a moment of complaint, there may be a reason not to, either not sharing it because somebody doesn't want to share, or being hesitant in process. So I think councillor Dunne's and councillor Hoskin raised something really important, and in next year's report, we will be reporting on what have we done proactively to try and make sure that we are understanding ethnicity, culture, and context of complaints. And I draw that in a little bit with, for example, there's a mention in there consistently, our fathers. And there is some work and pieces that we're doing at the moment about our fathers particularly not feeling engaged with our work. Is there something there about fathers within the processes? We're talking about feeling particularly aggrieved about outcomes. So there's a further level of detail that I think sort of fits together, Chair, with the comments that were made. And just want to make sure that commitment's clear that next year's, I think you'll see that sort of even deeper, deeper learning. And probably just finally to say, the reason we can get into that level of learning, which I think is better than what I've seen elsewhere, because new directories, not my work, so I can comment positively on it, this is a really good foundation of learning that's in place. The fact that Niana and the team have created that foundation means we can get into this next level of granularity, which is really good. It means that we will get even better from our learning as we continue over the years.
Thank you, Brian. I think the word that you mentioned about context, because we're dealing with children, makes it better to understand the backgrounds of what is really happening. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Niamh. We come to point 12, which is the exclusion of the public and press. That press went to section 100 of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. Members of the press and the public be excluded during consideration of the following item on the agenda, as it is likely that there will be disclosure of exempt information as defined in the relevant paragraph, so part one of schedule 12A of that act. So I'll just give a minute or a second for the public and members of the press to come out of the chamber, please. And also the stopping the recording on the internet, on the Teams meeting. Thank you.